Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. Members, please take your seats. Members, please take your seats. Good morning, everyone. I note that the hour has come and at the quorum of this council's president, this council session is now coming to order. All visitors, please retire outside the rails. Please take all side conversations outside of the council chambers. And I will ask all those present to please set your cell phones to silent and/or vibrate. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Reverend James A. Callahan, pastor and mistress of the Christ the King Parish. He is here today as the guest of council member O'Neill. I will ask all members and guests to please rise.
Council President, thank you for your kind invitation and welcome. Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, we give you thanks and praise for your mighty works. Thank you for creating us and sustaining us day by day. Thank you that you made us in your image to live in community with others. We thank you for our city, for our neighborhoods, for our schools, for our churches, for our families, and the individuals that make our city the special place that it is. I pray too this day for this council meeting. Give the members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous, be righteous in your sight, Lord, for the benefit of the people of Philadelphia and for your glory. And let the church say amen.
Amen. The chair thanks the Reverend for his invocation. Council will be at ease. Morning. To plan to see. The next order of business is the approval of the journal of the meeting of Tuesday, April the 3rd, 2025. The chair recognizes council member Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the journal of the meeting of Thursday, April 3rd, 2025, be approved.
It has been moved and properly seconded that the journal of the meeting of Thursday, April the 3rd, 2025, stand approved. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the journal is approved. The next order of business is a request for leave of absence and the chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
The chair thanks the council member. The chair recognizes Minority Leader Brooks.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the minority, there are no requests for leave of absence.
The chair thanks the council member. The chair now recognizes council member, Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's session of council and that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's council session.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Council will be at ease. It's okay, ma'am. The chair recognizes council member, Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters. Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
It has the move and property seconded that the legislative matters stated by council member and Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of this session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it and the motion carries. The chair will dispense with the regular order of business to recognize the guests and visitors joining us in chambers this morning. On behalf of all members of City Council, I welcome you to our council session. We appreciate you taking the time to join us as we attend to the legislative affairs of our great city. We certainly invite you to come again. The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President, for your indulgence. Today, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize a number of groups and organizations we have with us today in council at the onset of Black Maternal Health Week 2025. Later in this session, we are pleased to be hosting Representative Gina Curry from Delaware County. She'll be with us in council chambers. We recognize the founder and the convener of the Black Maternal Health Caucus for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, State Representative Morgan Seifus, our former colleague in City Council, and also State Representative Latasha D. Mays from Pittsburgh. They are the three co-conveners of the Black Maternal Health Caucus for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and Representative Curry will be here for them in a few moments. I'd also like to recognize Mary Ann Frey, and when I call you, please stand, Mary Ann Frey, President of Maternity Care Coalition, Vane Hill, Link Family Services, Yolanda... And I have a number of names, so please hold the applause. Yolanda Boykins, Oshun Family Center, Jordan Guy, Oshun Family Center, Salima McNeil, Oshun Family Center, Carla Mendez, Oshun Family Center, Whitney Roberts from the Philly Download, Janay Johns, Once Upon a Primy, Rhonda McAllister, A Home From Shauna Foundation, we have Cleo Robinson from A Home From Shauna Foundation, Jessica from the Board of A Home From Shauna Foundation, Alexis from Coco Life dot black, Naya Arusso from Maternity Care Coalition, Veronda Cradle from Maternity Care Coalition, Samantha Harday Road from Maternity Care Coalition, and Janay McAllister from A Home From Shauna Foundation, all with us for the onset of Black Maternal Health Week. And we did have a breakfast this morning, so we thank them for all their legislative policy and programmatic work. And finally, I'd like to recognize the 10 8th graders from Mary McLeod Bethune School who are here today as guests of Pastor G. Lamar Stewart. G. Lamar Stewart has been working with this group for the past school year around gun violence prevention, intervention, and keeping them all on the right path. So we recognize your district council member, but we also thank you, G. Lamar Stewart, for bringing in all the 8th graders from Mary McLeod Bethune School today. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Let's give our young people a round of applause, please. The chair recognizes Majority Whip Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public. In the same spirit of our Majority Leader, just want to continue the positivity and positive energy that's out there today. I've introduced a resolution that has put us in a position to bring some distinguished guests to City Council. I want to first start by thanking the district councilperson, Councilmember Curtis Jones, who represents St. Joe's University, as well as St. Joe's University alumni, Brian O'Neill, for being very supportive throughout the course of this measure of recognizing Eric Reynolds. I'm not going to talk too much about Eric right now, but I will ask Eric and the St. Joe's basketball team that's here today, can you all take a moment to stand up? Can we hold our applause in the spirit of... Can you... If you all can remain standing, this is really important. If you don't know, Eric is only the 19th player in the storied history of the city of Philadelphia, specifically looking at our Big Five, to score 2,000 points for his career. He's only the second player... He's only the second player to do it in St. Joe's University history. He's also the all-time leading scorer in St. Joe's University in what he has accomplished for his career, his distinguished career, where he stayed four years at the same school, which is almost unheard of in 2025. What he's had, has been able to accomplish makes him a Philadelphia legend. So we want to honor Eric as a Philadelphia Big Five and college basketball legend. We want to thank Coach Billy Lang for his great work as the head coach and the leader of one of our phenomenal institutions. Give a special shout out to my brother, Justin Scott, who's the assistant coach and a Philly basketball legend in his own right. Also want to thank Coach Ricks, Coach Lang, Coach Robot, Coach Wilford, and Coach Flegler, as well as his teammates that are here, Anthony, the Director of Student Athletics, Michelle Thomas, as well as Mr. Mari Moreno and Hockenberry. If I apologize if I messed up anybody's name, but if we can, can we please give St. Joe's University, the men's basketball team, and the entire stakeholder group that's here a round of applause? Thank you, Council President, and thank you all for being here. And also, as I close out, Council President, from one father to another father to a third father, I definitely want to congratulate Eric's father, who's here with him today as well, too, and let him know we appreciate the great young man he raised. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Great job, young man. The chair recognizes the gentleman from the 4th Councilmatic District, Councilman Curtis Jones, Jr.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and keeping with the spirit of Coach Thomas, but in a different vein, I want to recognize the Renegade Veteran Organization, that we want to thank them for their service, but also thank them for their future service mentoring our young people, young men in particular, in the city of Philadelphia. Can they please rise and be recognized? And secondly, we have members of the Citizens Police Oversight Committee coming down to deal with the legislation that is before us today. And we, with them, is someone that is not stranger to us, Lorraine Ballard. Laura is in here with her husband. Can her and her husband please be recognized? Welcome to City Council.
Can you please stand?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. As there are no presentations today, the next order of business is communications. The chair requested the Sergeant at Arms deliver the messages to the mayor from our outstanding chief clerk. Would the chief clerk please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications in her possession?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 705, 709, and 713 North 35th Street, 3712 and 3714 Wallace Street, and 3810 Haverford Avenue located in the 3rd Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code. And an ordinance amending Chapter 19-3200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Economic Development District and Strategic Development Area to provide for additional extensions of certain benefits under certain terms and conditions. And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for use by the city of premises located at 4101 Market Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions. And I am pleased to advise you that on April 9th, 2025, I signed the following bill, which was passed by council at its session on March 27th, 2025, Bill Number 250066-A. Council President, there are no further communications in my possession.
Thank you very much. The messages will be printed in the journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. The chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, everyone. I have one privileged resolution on your behalf, Council President Johnson.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the week of April 5th to the 11th, 2025, as week of the young child in Philadelphia in support of the National Association for the Education of Young Children, NAEYC, and commending the work of NAEYC for promoting high-quality educational and developmental services for children under eight years of age.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the privileged resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing April 11th through the 17th, 2025, as Black Maternal Health Week in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gautier.
Good morning, Council President. Today I have four bills and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bills and resolution?
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for use by the city of premises located at 4101 Market Street, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending subsection 19-2604-6 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Credit Contributions to Community Development Corporations, Nonprofit Organizations Engaged in Developing and Implementing Healthy Food Initiatives and Nonprofit Intermediaries, under which businesses may enter into agreements to make contributions to community development corporations and certain other organizations to receive tax credits by expanding eligibility for recipients of such funds and to uses to which fund, which such funds may be used, and which taxes that are used for this tax credit program, and increasing the number of businesses to which the credit shall be made available and providing the option for a commensurate grant program, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending subsection 9-203 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Street Vendors by permitting vendors licensed to operate on certain city streets from certain otherwise prohibited conduct, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire fee simple title or a lesser real estate interest in all or a portion of parcel or parcels of land located in and about the area bounded by 31st Street, Ludlow Street, and 32nd Street, together with all improvements thereon, for purposes of placing on the city plan, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 705, 709, and 713 North 35th Street, 3712 and 3714 Wallace Street, and 3810 Haverford Ave., located in the 3rd Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. The chair recognizes Majority Whip Councilmember Isaiah Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Again, good morning, colleagues. Again, I have two resolutions today, and I forgot to thank Mike Morag from Victory in North, as well as the Rump Foundation, and Gary Mills from Shoe Basketball is Not People for being here to celebrate our amazing student athlete. Thank you, Council President.
Would the chief clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Eric Reynolds for his historic contributions to the St. Joseph University's men's basketball program, his record-breaking journey to becoming the university's all-time leading scorer, and his lasting impact on the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Council will be at ease. Well, at this moment, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge outstanding and hardworking State Representative Gina Curry, who's joining us today. Thank you for joining us. She's here on behalf of Majority Leader, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson as a part of the Black Maternal Care Task Force. Thank you for joining us today, Representative. Would the chief clerk please continue reading the resolutions?
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to create a task force investigating the current state of higher education at this pillar of the Philadelphia regional economy and cultural landscape undergoes generational change.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. The chair recognizes the gentleman from the 4th Councilmatic District, Councilman Curtis Jones, Jr.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill and two non-privileged resolutions, one on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bill and resolutions?
An ordinance authorizing an encroachment in the nature of a staircase in the vicinity of 5313 Haverford Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19139, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred... No, this resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of... Oh, it was a bill. Okay, I'm moving too quick. This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the Elevation Project, a nonprofit organization for its outstanding contributions to reducing recidivism, supporting formerly incarcerated individuals, and helping create pathways to a brighter future.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a privileged resolution honoring Inspector Verdel Johnson for his retirement and years of service from the Philadelphia Police Department.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilmember Rue Landau, civil rights activist for housing.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, Council President, colleagues, public. Today I have three resolution, three privileged resolutions, one non-privileged resolution, and one non-privileged resolution on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing April 10th, 2025, as National Youth HIV and AIDS Awareness Day in the city of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the Philadelphia chefs and restaurants named as finalists for the 2025 James Beard Awards.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing April 15th, 2025, as World Art Day in the city of Philadelphia, and celebrating the creativity, innovation, and cultural diversity of the city's fine arts.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to pass the Ready to Rent Act and increase housing opportunities for Pennsylvanians by automatically sealing most eviction records.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the Trump administration to reverse the mass termination of Health and Human Services, HHS staff, that manages low-income home energy assistance program, LIHEEP, which distributes 4.1 billion annually to state governments to assist low-income households in paying their utility bills, threatening the health and safety of vulnerable populations in extreme temperatures.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The chair recognizes the leader of the Kensington Caucus, Councilmember Kathy Lizada.
And Council President, today I offer one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the chief clerk please read the title of the resolution?
It's an ordinance.
Would the chief clerk please read the title of the bill?
And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan number 226 by striking from the city plan and vacating Bristol Street from Second Street to Hunting Park Avenue, under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. The chair recognizes the gentleman from the 5th Councilmatic District, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer five privileged resolutions, two of which are on your behalf.
I offer five privileged resolutions, two of which are on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolutions?
A privileged resolution recognizing April sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-five, as National Crime Victims Rights Week in Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution, I'll, I'll come back to that one. A privileged resolution recognizing the month of April as National Woodworking Month in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing the week of April thirteenth through nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Philadelphia.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the National Football League to abandon a proposed rule changes to halt the usage of the Philadelphia Eagle's signature quarterback sneak, better known as the brotherly shove or the tush push.
Counsel will be at ease.
Non-perfect.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the establishment of the Special Committee on Reform Act One Thirty-five, the Abandoned and Blighted Property Conservatorship Act, to develop recommendations for reforming the act to prevent its use for exploitation of vulnerable communities.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair recognizes the leader of the Working Families Party, Majority, Minority Leader, Councilmember Kendra Brooks.
Council President, I have no resolutions today.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jim Harity.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution today.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the privileged resolution from the Chair of Labor?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Special Committee on Kensington to hold hearings on the intersection of homelessness and subsys abuse disorder, S U D, in communities with both un- with both unstable housing and addiction.
Thank you very much. This resolution will be placed on the final passage, today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes Minority Leader of the Working Families Party, Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke.
Thank you, and good morning, Council President. I have three bills that we are calling the Safe Healthy Homes Act to introduce today, as well as one non-privileged resolution to introduce on your behalf, sir.
Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance amending chapter nine dash thirty-nine hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Property Licenses and Owner Accountability to Clarify License, Licensing Requirements, Authorize the Department to Create a Proactive Inspection Program, Require Public Reporting Related to Code Compliance, and Establish Remedies, Damages, and Protections for Tenants, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending chapter nine dash eight hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant to Modify the Requirements Related to Good Cause for Ending a Tenancy, Adding Protections Against Retaliation and Harassment for Tenants and Tenant Organizations, Specify Tenants' Rights Related to Implied Warranty and of Habitability, and Provide a Legal Presumption Related to Breaches of the Impplied Warranty and of Habitability, Create a Tenant Right to Organize, Specify Deadlines for Asserting Claims, and Establish and Enhance Enforcement Mechanisms, Remedies, Damages, and Protections, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending chapter nine dash eight hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Landlord and Tenant to hereby authorize the creation of the Anti-Displacement Fund to Establish Violations for Displacement and to authorize the Department of Planning and Development to administer the Anti-Displacement Fund, and Amending Section A dash five oh five entitled Cease Operations Order to Add Notice Requirements, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. I appreciate the enthusiasm, but during public comment, you'll have the opportunity to speak on the bill put before us. Good job, Member O'Rourke. Thank you very much, sir. Would the Chief Clerk please read the resolution?
And a non-privileged resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to draft and pass bipartisan legislation that will secure necessary funding for SEPTA to prevent service closures, fare increases, and a decline in mobility and economic activity for the citizens of Philadelphia and neighboring counties.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council. The Chair now recognizes Chairman of Transportation and Public Utility, the gentleman from the Northeast, former State Representative, the Honorable Councilmember Mike Driscoll.
Morning, Mr. President. I have five privileged resolutions to be introduced on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolutions?
A non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of James Lamont Rozier to the Veterans Advisory Commission.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for next week for consideration.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Myra Ralph to the Veterans Advisory Commission.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Dave Jeanette to the Veterans Advisory Commission.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Darby Ford to the Veterans Advisory Commission.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at our next session of council.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the appointment of Angela Dunston to the Veterans Advisory Commission.
This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at next session of council. The Chair recognizes the distinguished gentleman who holds all of our institutional history and knowledge, our most senior and distinguished member, Councilmember Brian O'Neill from Northeast Philadelphia.
Only because it's very hard to forget. I, I know bills and resolutions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. The Chair recognizes the gentleman from that great part of Philadelphia known as South Philly in Appropriations Chairman, Councilmember Mark Squiller.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I offer two privileged resolutions and two bills, one on your behalf.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance amending Title fourteen, zoning code of the Philadelphia Code, Sections fourteen through four oh nine, entitled S P C I V, Civic Educational and Medical Special Purpose District, and amending Title fourteen dash six oh two, entitled Use Tables by Allowing Religious Assembly Uses in Certain Special Purpose Districts, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending chapter nineteen dash thirty-two hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone Economic Development District and Strategic Development Area to Provide for Additional Extensions of Certain Benefits, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the Newman-Goretty Girls' Basketball Team on Winning the P I A A State Championship.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the Newman-Goretty Boys' Basketball Team on Winning the P I A A State Championship.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. The Chair recognizes the gentle lady from Northwest Philadelphia, Deputy Whip, Councilmember Cindy Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the bill and the resolution?
An ordinance amending Section fourteen dash one thousand of the Philadelphia Code entitled Historic Preservation, Requiring Notification to City Council Members of Historical Designations in the City of Philadelphia.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the creation of a Special Committee on Child Separation in Philadelphia to Review Child Separation Practices in Philadelphia's Child Welfare System and Develop Recommendations to Ensure Compliance with State Child Protective Services Law, Protect Children, Uphold Due Process Rights of Families, and Prevent the Unnecessary Breakup of Families.
Good job, Member Bass. This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar for consideration at the next session of council. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. I will be introducing one privileged resolution today.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the title of the resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to Hold a Hearing on the Policies of the Department of Health and Human Services Regarding Child Welfare Protections.
Thank you very much. This resolution will be placed on the final passage calendar.
Today's final passage. Never mind.
This resolution will be placed on today's final passage calendar. Thank you very much, Chief Clerk. The next order of business is reports from Committee. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young for report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports out fourteen bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Would the Chief Clerk please read the report?
The Committee on Streets and Services, to which were referred the following bills: Bill number two five zero one oh two, an ordinance amending Section Two of an ordinance, Bill number two two zero six three nine, approved January tenth, twenty twenty-three, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan Twenty-seven dash S by Striking from the City Plan the Easterly twenty-feet-wide Portion of Swanson Street from Wolf Street to Snyder Avenue, Striking from the City Plan and Vacating the Legally Open Portion of Vandalia Street from Wolf Street to Wykako Avenue, and Reserving and Placing on the City Plan a Right-of-Way for Sewer and Drainage Purposes within the Portion of Swanson Street, being Stricken and Authorizing Acceptance of the Grant to the City of the Said Right-of-Way, all under certain terms and conditions, including the dedication to the City of Beds, of the remaining unopened portions of Swanson Street from Wolf Street to Jackson Street, and from Jackson Street to Snyder Avenue, by Extending the Period for Compliance with the Terms and Conditions stated therein. And Bill number two four zero one four eight, an ordinance amending chapter twelve dash thirty-four hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Use of an Automated Speed Enforcement System to Improve Safety by Providing for the Use Administration and Enforcement of Automated Speed Cameras on Routes Located Within Specified School Zones, under certain terms and conditions. And Bill number two four zero one seven six, an ordinance authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades on a Portion of City Plan number one one eight by Striking from the City Plan and Vacating a Widen Portion of Warnock Street on the Westerly Side thereof between Burke Street and Norris Street, and Relocating the Westerly House Line of Said Warnock Street, so as to align with the Westerly House Line of the unaffected portions of Warnock Street, as extending from Burke Street to Norris Street, under certain terms and conditions. And Bill number two five zero one seven seven, an ordinance authorizing encroachments in the nature of a Sidewalk Cafe in the vicinity of Twenty-two Wolf Street, Philadelphia, PA one nine one four eight, under certain terms and conditions. And Bill number two five zero two oh three, an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Ogden Street between North Thirteenth Street and Comac Street, Wood Street between North Eighteenth Street and North Nineteenth Street, North Twenty-first Street between Hamilton Street and Pennsylvania Avenue, Franklintown Boulevard between Callow Hill Street and Wood Street. And Bill number two five zero two oh eight, an ordinance amending Section twelve dash one 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 seven of the Philadelphia Code entitled Physically Handicapped and Disabled or Severely Disabled Veteran Parking, as it will take effect pursuant to Bill number two four zero six one three dash A A, approved December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, by revising the definition of disability parking space and further amending the Philadelphia Code by updating cross-references to Section twelve dash one 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 seven that now appear in Title Nine, entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions, and Title Twelve, Traffic Code, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two four zero two five zero two four zero, an ordinance amending Chapter twelve dash nine hundred, parking regulations and penalties, and Chapter twelve dash twenty-eight hundred, administrative adjudication of parking violations of the Philadelphia Code, revising penalties related to parking certain large vehicles, including boats, motorhomes, house coaches, house trailers, truck campers, recreational cargo, cargo trailers, and recreational trailers, under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two five zero two four one, an ordinance amending Section Two of an ordinance, Bill number two two zero four five four, approved November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Vacating of Cruz Town Road from Norwalk Road to its Terminus Southwesterly Therefrom, under certain terms and conditions, by Extending the Period for Compliance with the Terms and Conditions stated therein. And Bill number two five zero two six six, an ordinance regulating the direction of movement of traffic on Forty-seventh Street between Chestnut Street and King Sessing, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill number two five zero two six seven, an ordinance amending Section twelve dash seven oh one of the Philadelphia Code entitled Designation of Bicycle Lanes, to Authorize a Bicycle Lane and Removal of a Travel Lane on Forty-seventh Street, under certain terms and conditions. And Bill number two five zero two seven one, an ordinance amending the Philadelphia Code by Increasing the Penalties for the Prohibited Parking or Maintaining of Semi-Trailers and Truck Tractors at Residential Properties, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill number two five zero two seven two, an ordinance authorizing an Encroachment in the Nature of Planners in the Vicinity of Three Two Two through Forty Ray Street, Philadelphia, PA one nine one oh six, under certain terms and conditions. And Bill number two five zero two seven four, an ordinance authorizing an Encroachment in the Nature of Planners in the Vicinity of Two Nineteen West Rittenhouse Street, Philadelphia, PA one nine one four four, under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. And Bill number two five zero two oh nine, an ordinance amending Title Twelve of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Traffic Code, to Clarify Penalties and Procedures Associated with Smart Loading Zone Parking Enforcement, under certain terms and conditions, respectfully reports it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation. There are no further bills to report out from the Committee on Streets and Services, Council President.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit first reading on this day of the bills just read into the record by the Chief Clerk.
It has been moved in propriety second that the rules of council be suspended, so we have to permit the consideration of the bills just read by the clerk at today's session of council. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Counsel will be at ease.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to also acknowledge while we were doing acknowledgements earlier, I missed someone who is very important and a staple in our district, Mr. Gary Mills, who does a fantastic program, Shoot Basketball is Not People. Gary, can you stand? And I just wanted to recognize all of the hard work that he's been doing for years in the Germantown community and really reaching out and touching our young people, so I thought it would not be robbery to recognize him and thank him for his outstanding service. Thank you, Mr. President. Also, I just wanted to ask for a request to leave of absence. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to step out of council chambers, but we'll be voting aye on all bills and resolutions today.
Leave is granted. Thank you very much. The next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committees with suspension of rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on a second reading and final passage calendar for the next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on a second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Numbers two five zero two five zero two five zero two five one, two five zero two five two, two five zero two five three, two five zero two five four, two five zero two nine seven, two five zero two nine eight, two five zero two nine nine, two five zero three zero zero, two five zero three zero four, two five zero three zero five, two five zero three one zero, two five zero three one four, two five zero three one seven, two five zero three one eight, and two four zero three three three. The following bills and resolutions on the calendar are being held. Two five zero three zero three and two four zero six six five, two four zero four two seven dash double A is being placed on the suspension calendar.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader. Before considering the bills and resolutions, we will consider public comment as follows. Your public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible acting in today's council session. All speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, please do so now by giving your name to Miss Hassan at the table outside the rails to my left. Once you have been signed, once you have signed up, you will be called in the order in which your name appears on a sign-up sheet. Under ideal circumstances, public members each will have three minutes to speak. However, this time limit may vary from session to session. Today, the time limit will be two minutes. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, I intend to hold faithfully to the two-minute limit. When you begin speaking, you will see a green light on the podium. When there are thirty seconds remaining to your time, the light will turn yellow, which is your reminder to please conclude your remarks. Once two minutes have passed, the light will turn red, and the sergeant-at-arms will disconnect the microphone. At that point, please yield the podium to the next speaker if you have not already done so. I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to I also reserve the right pursuant to our rules of council to limit repetitious comments on the same subject manner. And before I ask for the first clerk to come up and speak, I also want to acknowledge the presence of the leader and business manager of Local Three-three-two, Mr. Sam Staten Jr. Thank you for joining us today, sir. I will now ask the Chief Clerk to please read the name of our first speaker.
We have State Representative Regina Curry. May Eric Reynolds, Billy Lang, Juanita Clark, and Kate Perez also make their way to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is State Representative Gina H. Curry, and I'm happy to be here today. And I just want to thank Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson and the esteemed members of council and the committee. Again, my name is State Representative Gina H. Curry. I proudly serve the one hundred and sixty-fourth Legislative District in Delaware County. And I also am the co-chair of the Pennsylvania Black Maternal Health Caucus. I would also like to say that my co-chair, Representative Morgan Seifis, which most of you know here, is not able to be here today, and my other co-chair, who lives out in Allegheny County, Latasha D. Mays, we are so proud to be here today. Thank you to the Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for your continued leadership and for introducing today's resolution recognizing Black Maternal Health Week. Black Maternal Health Week starts this Friday, and it goes until the seventeenth of the month. I also want to thank this council for consistently using your platform to spotlight the issues Black women and families face across the city and the Commonwealth. As a legislator and as a Black woman, this issue is both professionally and deeply personal. We are facing a crisis. Recent data from the CDC shows that while maternal mortality rates are decreasing for white and Hispanic women, they are increasing for Black women. In twenty-twenty-three, the maternity maternal mortality rate for Black women rose to fifty-point-three deaths per a hundred thousand live births, nearly three and a half times the rate for white women. Here in Pennsylvania, the numbers are just alarming. Black birthing individuals are dying at nearly twice the rate of their white counterparts. And let's be clear, over eighty percent of these deaths are preventable. In Harrisburg, we've made progress. We've extended postpartum Medicaid coverage, expanded access to doula care, created the PA Doula Advisory Board, increased education, and secured over thirty million in investments for maternal health. That's, yeah. Including funding for training, innovation, and community-based support programs like the Philly Joy Bank. But our work is far from over. These disparities are rooted in systemic racism, unequal access to care, and a failure to listen to the voices of Black women. Black Maternal Health Week is a time to raise awareness, but it's also a time to recommit. We need continued collaboration at every level of government, local, state, and federal. We need to keep pushing for policies and investments that put the lives of Black mothers and birthing people first. This resolution is more than a recognition, it's a reminder that we have more work to do, and by working together, we can change the story for the next generation. I also want to thank all of the grassroots, beautiful Black women who do this work every day. Thank you so much, Council President, and to the Majority Leader. We appreciate all your work on Black maternal health, and we will get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
We have Eric Reynolds, Billy Lang, Juanita Clark, Kate Perez. May Christine Sullivan and Damaris Alvarado Rodriguez also make their way to the podium.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Eric Reynolds. Can y'all hear me? Good morning. All right, there we go. Good morning, everybody. My name is Eric Reynolds. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity. On behalf of the Reynolds and the Tibbs family, I would like to thank Councilman Thomas and the Philadelphia City Council for this opportunity to recognize our son Eric. When Eric committed to St. Joe's, they did not know how loyal he was, and here we are four years later, celebrating his loyalty as well as history being made. To the coaches, team managers, medical staff, and the mascot, and most of all, Michelle, for your loyalty to our son at St. Joe's. To Eric's teammates, I want to thank you for creating such a wonderful brotherhood for our son. I always wanted more children, and because of that brotherhood, we gained more children. I'm a quote lover, so I'm going to leave everybody with a quote today. Procrastination. Procrastination is the arrogant assumption that God owes you another opportunity to do what you already had time to do. Thank you.
See, that's, that's the example of saying the whole word without saying the whole line.
Come on, people, I know y'all hear me. Ain't none of us in this room perfect. I'm standing up for the housing. Juanita Clark, I'm standing up for, and everybody else in this room. I'm standing up for, because you keep saying put to the side, we keep putting to the side for a long time. We tired of sitting and waiting for y'all to keep putting to the side, putting to the side, because guess what? We suffering. All over the world, y'all can't see, we going through, it's, it's shambles. And at the end of the day, our kids is mixed up in this situation. We keep putting to the side, we won't leave it to our kids. And then what? They don't know nothing, trust me. All they know is computers right now. And for the housing, I feel though, you're right, the landlords that come into this state, and some of y'all, some of y'all, help these billionaire landlords for money. And now, people like me with low income with children, can't even afford a home or job because sometimes these jobs only pay in minimum wage, and y'all sitting on high tech while we sitting here trying to make a meal out of fifteen cent to feed our kids? These are people we need to take charge for, because at the end of the day, we all we got, all of us. No one in here is perfect. So the bill that we supposed to put today, let us get, because guess what? It's a lot of homeless, and y'all just keep walking by them like y'all don't see them. Come on now, y'all got to understand that we is the majority, and the majority show up. But we got to keep coming out here protesting and protesting, like you said, we gonna put it aside, we gonna think about who gonna take that case? Why should you take the case today? Let's go, because guess what? Our kids ain't got too much, because we see them one day, we see them again, and it's not good, y'all. Come on, y'all, wake up.
Thank you very much, man. Thank you.
Kate Perez, Cruelty We Send Abroad Turns Inward. Trump unilaterally dismantled the USAID freezing foreign aid that Congress had already appropriated. They were the UN's primary partner in delivering food assistance to more than fifteen million people in Yemen, a country where babies are born so hungry that they eat their own hands, and the United States has bombed them over two hundred times since March fifteenth. That's another thing we should be condemning the president for. Food security is a human right, and last week, the World Food Program had to shut down all the bakeries in Gaza as there is no more flowers to bake with, along with indiscriminate carpet bombing sponsored by Day and Zimmerman. Our sister city has prevented the entry of any aid into the Strip for more than four weeks since March ninth. Hunger in the US is at an all-time high. People are afraid to get food in fear of ICE raids, and those who line up for hours may get food that don't fit their diet, with reports of people passing out in the cold waiting. The administration decided to tackle this by targeting our schoolchildren and local farmers. We have to move away from food banking and into giving people money to buy their own food, reducing waste, increasing choice, and confidence. As the federal government cuts our funding, the city budget is going to have to make up for it somehow. No more drones for the cops this round, we have to supplement the millions lost. And I'm still wondering how many more times this council can condemn Trump until he lists you as terrorist sympathizers for your speech and has ICE send you to criminal detention in Louisiana, Les Rumeza Osterc, especially dangerous now as the White House announces that they'd like to send US citizens to the El Salvador terrorist prison, too. Seventy-five percent of the Venezuelan men sent to the prison had no criminal record in any country. They also announced they'll be monitoring all immigrant social media for antisemitism, a word used to detain thousands of activists protesting sending money and weapons to an occupying state famous for targeting children like US citizen Amer Rabe, murdered on Tuesday for throwing stones as soldiers illegally invaded the West Bank. The IOF said, quote, "Eliminating one terrorist and hitting two additional terrorists after Israeli settlers saw the fourteen-year-old and two other children in the legs." The paramedics were not allowed to see him until after he had bled to death. No more arms, free Palestine.
We have Christine Sullivan next. We have Christine Sullivan, then Damaris Alvarado Rodriguez. May Salima McNeil, Jenny Johns, Bonnie Hill, and Diana Coleman also make their way to the podium.
Greetings, I am Christine Sullivan, founder and CEO of Woomish. This morning, I stand before you to speak on the resolution recognizing Black Maternal Health Week in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Woomish provides birth and postpartum doula services, educational resources, as well as doula training and certification nationwide. With Philadelphia, Pennsylvania being our flagship location, we have provided birth doula services for hundreds of families, a plethora of educational resources, and I can directly speak to the positive impact that birth outcomes have turned around and that we're continuing to do so. With us being able to offer Medicaid services as well, we are seeing that these outcomes will begin to turn around. The tremendous work that is being done in Philadelphia to turn around birth outcomes needs to be recognized, and on behalf of the birth workers who represent Philadelphia, PA, along with the doulas and educators of Woomish, I would like to say that I support Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson's resolution recognizing Black Maternal Health Week in Philadelphia, PA. Thank you.
Good morning, Council President Johnson, council members, and fellow citizens. My name is Damaris Alvarado Rodriguez, the Executive Director of Children's Playhouse. I stand before you today to strongly support Resolution twenty-five zero-two-nine-eight, which urgently calls for the preservation of Head Start funding. For over twenty years, I've witnessed Head Start's profound impact in Philadelphia. At Children's Playhouse, we serve a hundred Head Start children, a vital part of our commitment to four hundred and seventy-six families with children from birth to pre-kindergarten. We offer crucial lifeline, providing quality early learning that otherwise inaccessible to many. It's incredibly moving to celebrate our youngest learners, their first school experience, especially when they are the first in their families to attend. Head Start breaks cycles of limited access. Head Start is more than daycare, it's a fundamental investment in our city's future. Our program nurtures children, providing educational, social, emotional foundation they need for success in kindergarten and beyond. We equip them with, and drive with confident, capable individuals. As Resolution twenty-five oh-two-nine-eight rightly states, Head Start is critical family support. Our partnerships, agreements empower parents to achieve goals like returning to school, securing employment. Head Start programs like ours are the cornerstone of economic mobility in Philadelphia. For many children, Head Start is a haven with nutritious meals, addressing food insecurity, and enabling parents to work or and cared for for the program is this. I therefore, I implore you to strongly support Resolution twenty-five oh-two-nine-eight to commit in protecting Head Start funding. This is a critical investment in our children, our families, and Philadelphia's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Salima McNeil. I'm the founder and executive director of Ocean Family Center, and I am so excited because this is the eve of Black Maternal Health Week that starts tomorrow. Thank you, thank you. I wanted to start by thanking our city council for supporting the advancement of Black maternal health, specifically Catherine Gilmore Richardson, Minority Leader Kendra Brooks, and Councilmember Nina Ahmad. This is the seventh year that we're celebrating Black Maternal Health Week here in Philadelphia, and as the lead planners at Ocean Family Center, we are elated to see all of the support that we have garnered over this last almost decade. When we first started in twenty eighteen to recognize Black Maternal Health Week, it was me, just up here by myself yelling about budget and trying to advance Black maternal health from a grassroots perspective. So I am excited to have my partners, as we have collectively attacked this issue and have made advancements in Black maternal health. As a result, Philadelphia will be the home of the first Black-led, woman-run, and community-driven maternal wellness center that enhances, thank you, that enhances the standard of prenatal care with doula services, lactation support, and psychotherapy services. This should not be a luxury for our participants, but there should be the standard of care. So working in partnership with our hospital systems, our legislators, and the community, we will be in the Kids' Intense Section of Philadelphia in opening our doors in twenty-twenty-six for Ocean Family Center, a maternal wellness village, to live and service the community at large. Thank you so much for this resolution, because the fight still continues for equitable care, and our position of owning, owning our own brick-and-mortar location here in Philadelphia as a nonprofit organization is where we thrive. So thank you so much for your support, and we look forward to sharing with you our next steps.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Chairman, and all who support Black maternal health. My name is Janaye Johns. I'm a micropreemie mom, author, advocate, and the president of Once Upon a Preemie. Today is a full-circle moment, because I stood before you virtually in twenty-twenty-one as we introduced the Black Maternal Health Week resolution then. As I stated then, I still believe it is our civic and professional duty to support and protect the lives of Black birthing women and preterm infants in the city of Philadelphia. While we all know the disheartening statistics that too many Black moms die too soon and too many Black babies are born too soon, we also know these disparities are avoidable and preventable. As we introduce Black Maternal Health Week this year, let us also remember that moms and babies deserve the promise of this resolution, not just during this week of celebration and acknowledgement, but year-round until these disparities no longer exist. At Once Upon a Preemie, we sit in the unique seat of leading the nation's first virtual and accredited health and racial equity training program for perinatal and neonatal healthcare professionals to transform the delivery of healthcare. We also advocate for strong maternal and infant health legislation, as well as empower families through education and resources. When connected with Black preemie families here in the city of Philadelphia, we ask about, we ask about their experiences in our local neonatal intensive care units. While far too many families reported experiencing medical racism and discrimination, others described their experiences as safe, respectful, empowering, and especially when doulas and midwives were a part of their care team. It is through this lens that we understand the importance of ensuring our healthcare professionals are equipped with the routine and continuous implicit bias training that families need to be assured that their healthcare workforce will not discriminate against them. In closing, let this day serve as a reminder that collectively, we have the power, the leadership, and the opportunity to be the nation's very first, to be proud of our legacy to ensure all moms, particularly Black moms, receive care that is bias-free, physically, psychologically safe, respectful, equitable, and filled with joy. Thank you so much for your support of Black Maternal Health Week, and we look forward to closing gaps here in Philadelphia. Thank you.
I was a preemie, too, so thank you.
We have Bonnie Hill, Diana Coleman. May Leslie Spina, Suzanne Kavchak, Christina Coleman, Sonya Hackett, and April Jackson also make their way to the podium.
Greetings, council members and guests. My name is Vonay Hill. I am the founder and CEO of Hillcrest Development and Consulting, and the founder of Linked Family Services, a five-oh-one-C-three nonprofit organization. Through both of my businesses, I support communities across Philadelphia through maternal health advocacy, training, and leadership development, career and workforce advancement, and strategic entrepreneurship support. I come to you today not only as a professional with over fifteen years in child welfare, but also as a Black mother. also as a Black mother. I have two biological children. In 2014, during the birth of my son, I was left without pain medication for over 18 hours. In 2020, it happened again during the birth of my daughter for 12 hours. I was in active labor, contractions every three minutes, yet because I wasn't dilating, I was told I wasn't in real labor. I was sent home both times, only to return within three hours, when the pain and labor could no longer be denied by someone on the outside looking in. In 2020, as my blood pressure began rising, the doctor hesitated to begin my pre-planned C-section. I had to advocate for myself, explaining that my blood pressure had been stable throughout my entire pregnancy, and firmly stating that if something happened to me, the responsibility would fall on her. I asked to speak to patient relations, and only then was I taken back for surgery. But I always asked myself, what if I didn't know how to advocate? What if I didn't know the language to protect myself? After that experience, I finally understood what my own mother meant when she told me in 2014, "I was scared you were going to die on the table." In 2020, I was scared too. That fear became fuel. I deepened my advocacy, and in 2023, I became the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Thor's Nest Coordinator for Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. For more than 40 years, this national program, run in partnership with March of Dimes, has promoted early and consistent prenatal care education and resources to prevent low birth weight and premature births. That's why I fully support Councilmember Gilmore Richardson's Black Maternal Health Week resolution. It acknowledges our pain, centers our lived experiences, and brings visibility to a crisis that continues to impact families across Philadelphia. Thank you for your leadership and allowing me to speak today.
Thank you.
I'm Diana Coleman, and I am here representing one PA, West Southwest Rising. Oh, no, West Southwest. So what is a home? In its literal sense, a home is a physical structure, a place where we live and reside. A home represents a place of belonging, comfort, security, and refuge, offering a space of family, memories, and personal growth, and often symbolizing a sense of stability and identity. It's where we can grow, learn, and develop as individuals. A home is a base where everything begins, a place to return. But what if your home is a hazard to your health? What if it's killing you and no one seems to care? Now let's ground this in, let's make this relatable to everyone in this room. By a show of hands, how many people in this room have rented in the past, are current renters, and/or have loved ones that are renters? Let me see some hands. Keep those hands up. Of those people that have their hands up, how many have moved into a rental property that initially appeared habitable? Don't keep those hands up. Only to learn after moving in that it had mold, rodents, and/or problems with plumbing, heat, gas, and sewage systems? How many? Keep your hands up or add them. Now how many people have reached out about your concerns to be addressed, only to be gaslighted, threatened, dismissed, and ignored? Keep your hands up. To our city council members, when your constituents' home is a health hazard mentally, emotionally, and physically, who should they turn to? When slumlords are unresponsive and prioritize money over their health, who should your constituents turn to? When your constituents are retaliated against by their slumlords for asserting their right to live in homes that are habitable, who should they turn to? I'm leaving. During the winter months and your constituents lose their possessions and their homes and sometimes even their lives due to house fires that could have been prevented had slumlords addressed those certain conditions and oftentimes documented violations, who should they turn to? We're coming to you all today. Hold those landlords accountable. It is everyone's right to live in a safe and healthy home. The burden should not be placed on the renter. Protect your constituents.
Thank you, sis. We appreciate it.
Whether a person lives in a safe
Thank you very much. Could the chief clerk please call the next speaker? Thank you very much, ma'am. Could the chief clerk please call the next speaker? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Good morning, City Council President Johnson and distinguished members of City Council. My name is Dr. Leslie Spina. I'm speaking to you today about early childhood education as the Executive Director of the Voice of ECE, a grassroots advocacy agency working with over 150 early learning providers here in Philadelphia. I'm also the Executive Director of Kinder Academy, which operates five early childhood centers in northeast Philadelphia, serving 500 families. For 30 years, I've been privileged to work in this field. I know its promise. I know its pain. I want to take you back to March 2020, five years ago, when the world shut down. At that time, my organization employed 100 dedicated professionals. Just weeks earlier, I used my own home to secure a $2 million loan to build a new center in an underserved neighborhood. It was more than a building. It was a dream, a hub for families, a home for educators pursuing credentials and degrees, a promise to children who deserve more. But the pandemic halted everything. Before the first hammer struck, before a single child entered the building, 100 educators laid off. A dream deferred, not lost. And yet, in those early days, something extraordinary happened. Society finally saw us. Early childhood education stepped into the sun. People realized what we already knew, that no one can work without a plan for their young children, that care and education are inseparable, that Head Start, pre-K counts, and programs like Philly Pre-K are not luxuries, they are necessities. But now the sun has set, and we are worse off than we were in March 2020. How is this possible? Let me be clear, Head Start is a lifeline. It is often the first and only opportunity for children in poverty to access high-quality, consistent nurturing education. It is the only reason that many families can go to work, go to school, or break generational cycles of poverty, and yet we find ourselves fighting to maintain it, to keep classrooms open, to pay professionals a livable wage. And while we are deeply concerned about the looming changes at the federal level in both Head Start and the Department of Ed, we're watching with hope and pride as our city steps forward. I'm proud of Philadelphia for acknowledging these potential shifts and thinking proactively about how to protect our children. Philadelphia has done the hardest work. We need to continue doing that. Remember that the School District of Philadelphia and you, the city council members, have worked so hard to ensure that seats across the city are available to all of our children, those most in need. Please remember to continue this hard work, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your advocacy. Can I take a moment at ease to acknowledge Chief Inspector, Philadelphia Police Department, who is joining us today, is Deborah Francis. Thank you very much for joining us. Please begin, please.
Christine Coleman. I'm here today to represent Precious Angels Preparatory Academy. My name is Christine Coleman, and I come to you not just as a Head Start teacher, but also as a proud Head Start parent. My connection to this program is both personal and professional, and it spans generations. My oldest daughter, who will turn 17 this August, is now a rising senior in high school. She has been an honor roll student her entire academic career, and I credit her Head Start teachers for laying the strong academic foundation that helped her to thrive. My 14-year-old daughter also attended Head Start, and just like her sister, she has been an honor roll student ever since. And now my three-year-old son is currently attending Head Start. I've seen firsthand, over and over again, how this program sets children up for success from the very beginning. It has touched every one of my children's lives in meaningful ways. If Head Start were to be taken away, it would devastate so many households, especially in impoverished communities like the one I served and grew up in. So many of the families I work with every day don't even earn wages that meet the federal poverty guidelines. And while, like some of you, I also have strong feelings about our welfare system and how resources are being distributed, I firmly believe this: These children, these innocent children, didn't ask to come into this world. They didn't choose their circumstances. If we are going to be a country that lives up to the words in our constitution, and if we're going to call ourselves the land of the free and the home of the brave, we must be brave enough to fight for the children who can't fight for themselves. As an educator, I meet children and families from all walks of life. But I'm not just a teacher. I'm a counselor, a social worker, a nurse, a friend, and for some children, a second parent. My work is deeply rewarding because I get to help shape lives from the very beginning. I potty train them. I teach them how to speak, how to listen, how to love learning. I show up every single day because I know my students need me. And honestly, they give me the push I need when I don't even feel like getting up. At Precious Angels Preparatory Academy, our Head Start program is more than a school. It's a safe haven. We feed children nutritious meals. We nurture them. We educate them. We play with them. We teach them right from wrong. And some of our kids cry when their parents come to pick them up because they don't even want to leave. That alone speaks volumes about the environment we create. And let's be real, education has changed. The new generation of parents is struggling. Many are lost, financially unstable, single, uneducated, overwhelmed. While we still say parents are the first teachers, too many of these simply, too many of them simply don't have the tools. That's why Head Start matters. It steps in when parents can't. We become their co-parents, their support system. If you take away Head Start, children will suffer. We solid during COVID, child abuse and neglect faces roles. And if Head Start disappears, those numbers will skyrocket again. For many single parents, Head Start is the only break they get, the only consistent support system they have. Please understand that Head Start isn't just a preschool program. It's a lifesaving, future-building necessity. From a mother, from a teacher, from someone who loves this work and loves these children, I am begging you to protect this program, protect these families, and protect their futures.
Thank you for your advocacy.
May Sonya Hackett and April Jackson make their way to the podium, along with Janay McAllister, Mary Ann Frey, and Seneca Grant.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you. I've been enjoying all the testimonies today, especially from many of the daycare workers that are from our area in the ninth district. I actually just wanted to make a request to her leave, to attend to business in the ninth district today, just to be excused, but I want to be recorded eye on all bills and resolutions.
The leave is granted.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Would Chief Clerk please call the next person to testify, please?
Sonya Hackett, April Jackson, then Janay McAllister, Mary Ann Frey, and Seneca Grant.
Please begin.
Hello, my name is Sonya Hackett. I'm here representing your Child's World Learning Center. I am also a parent for Head Start, and I've been with them for over a year now. And they have provided my son, who's on the spectrum, the well services that he needs, the support. And I don't think that this should be null and void at this moment. I benefited from the program, the support, education, and resources my family received through this program, made it a lasting difference in our lives. Early Head Start gave my child a strong foundation and gave me the tools I needed to be more confident and an informed parent. I truly believe this program is essential for families in our country and our community. Please continue to support and prioritize funding for early Head Start. Investing in our youngest children is one of the most impactful decisions we can make for our city's future. Please stand with all our families and protect these essential programs. Our children deserve a strong start, no matter the zip code or income level.
Thank you.
To Council President Johnson, to all the esteemed members of the council, I want to say thank you. My name is April Jackson Washington, and the first thing I need to let you guys know is I'm not originally from Philadelphia, but I am a proud Philadelphian. My husband and I relocated, he's originally from Philadelphia, but I relocated from the South in Alabama because Philadelphia was known to me as a place of prosperity. I'm standing before you today as a Head Start alum and as a current Head Start parent. I'm begging you guys to please make sure you support the Resolution 250298. I don't need a piece of paper because I can speak from experience. And Head Start was where I first learned how to correctly speak English. Head Start was where I got the support services I needed as a student with a disability, with a mother who worked and retired from the state with an honorable 25-year career, and a father that retired from the US Navy after a 25-year honorable career. I experienced the benefits of Head Start as an alum, and I am now reaping that benefit as a parent of a child that is in Head Start. Not only is it important for the children, but it is an investment in the future economic development and economic prosperity of the city of Philadelphia. This city was founded on Craker principles of prosperity and religious freedom. And what I want to make sure that is very clear and very understood, that we have an opportunity in this city as we have always done. We have always stood against whatever the national temperature is when it does not go in the best interest of our citizens. And I can say that I was intentional in my relocation to this city, not just anywhere in the country, but this specific city. It's so important with Head Start that we recognize that our children, it's not just a resolution in favor of them. It is supporting the men and women that pour themselves and dedicate themselves to the future workforce of Philadelphia. It is not just meals and guaranteed security and guaranteed places to learn and grow. It is reminding the men and women that show up every day, that are qualified, that are trained, that dedicate themselves, they need to be paid fair wages. It's an investment in current Philadelphia. It's an investment in future Philadelphia. So please, whatever you do, when it is your opportunity to stand firm for the city of Philadelphia, remember that it's not just small children. You're letting men and women know right now that we value education, we're not afraid of the current administration's attack on education, and we believe in economic uplift. Please and thank you, whatever you do, remember a vote for this resolution is a vote for our current and our future. Thank you.
Good morning, Janay McAllister, in support of Black Maternal Health Week resolution. I am in the community as a wellness coach, postpartum doula, and wellness coordinator for a home from Shauna Foundation. But before all of that, I am a mom, a Black mom. First, I would like to thank Councilmember Gilmore Richardson for introducing this resolution. As a community member on the ground doing the work, I appreciate the work being done at the tables that make a difference. Black Maternal Health Week will continue to be a staple in bringing the awareness and education to the crisis that we are in. Black mothers and birthing persons are dying of preventable causes. Rallying together as a community from all aspects is just the beginning of a solution. A part of my birthing story is the beautiful outcome of having a doula and midwives being a part of my birthing plan. Creating access for all moms to have the option for this type of pregnancy and birth and support is vital. The other part of my story is my postpartum journey, which was the most difficult part of it all. Starting with getting stitches after my son tore me without enough medication and felt the pain of that process. The stigma that Black women can bear pain needs to stop. And now, I went on to experience postpartum depression and anxiety. I felt alone and isolated because my medical team was not asking the right questions, questions that should be culturally motivated, the questions that would highlight my daily life as a Black woman and where those gaps were. These illnesses look different and feel different to each individual. My story is just one of many. Thank you again, Councilmember Gilmore Richardson, for being the voice at the tables that we are not sitting at and creating the spaces for us to continue to do the groundwork on the work. Thank you.
Good morning, Council President Johnson, Majority Leader Catherine Gilmore Richardson, and the esteemed members of City Council. My name is Mary Ann Frey, and I serve as president and CEO for Maternity Care Coalition. Thank you. So, Maternity Care Coalition is a community-based nonprofit organization serving Pennsylvania and Delaware with over four decades of commitment to improving maternal and child health and early childcare and education. Maternity Care Coalition's mission is to improve the health We achieve this through direct service, advocacy, and research in collaboration with individuals, families, providers, and communities, and many other community members that are represented here today. And I want to also acknowledge Gina Curry, our partner at the state level, want to thank you for your support. So, we envision a future where parents impacted by racial and social inequities can birth with dignity, parent with autonomy, and raise babies who are healthy, growing, and thriving. We are encouraged to see our work affirmed and bolstered by Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson's Black Maternal Health Week Resolution, which celebrates black mothers and families and underscores the collective dedication and investment to address the black maternal health crisis, wonderfully explained and sadly in many of the other testimonies shared earlier in Philadelphia. MCC is committed to partnering with City Council, the administration of Mayor Parker, the Philadelphia Department of Public Health, and other community organizations to find and implement solutions for the persistent rates of and racial disparities in maternal mortality and morbidity in our city. These are complex and multifaceted challenges, and to see results, our solutions must be that as well. We are hopeful that this resolution and investment will bring us one step closer to a future where all black birthing people have better birth outcomes, live healthier lives, have greater access to high-quality and equitable services, and experience the joy of raising their children in a safer and more just Philadelphia. Thank you for your time.
We have Seneca Grant, May Mark Clinsey, Sean Fleming, and Marguerite Berg also make their way to the podium.
Hi, everyone. My English is not that good, but I'm here to represent, to be the voice of low-income people that have been discriminated and harassed by landlords. I'm with the Councilmember Ketsi Lozada, and I live on Asset Management. I lived there for 18 years, and I've been harassed by David Gonzalez for a couple of years and his management, harassed and discriminated. Asset Management is supposed to help low-income, but I've been living there for years, and it's not what I seen. I've been discriminated, I've been harassed, I've been getting sick for all the harassment they be making me go, I'm sorry, for all the harassment they be doing to me. And I would like to councilmembers to hear my voice for me and other low-income people. Thank you, and I'm sorry for my English.
Good morning, City Council. Good morning, everybody. My name is Sean Fleming, and I'm representing Renters United, Philadelphia, PA. I'm urging everyone to please support the Safe Healthy Homes Act. It is crucial. We all could benefit from it. I myself used to be a tenant before I moved out because I was facing harassment from my former landlord, so I just wanted to set the record and let this be known, that this is urgent. Stand with us, stand with all of us, we can all benefit from this. This is from personal experience, so I urge you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me here. My name is Marguerite Berg, and I didn't know I should have written something, but whatever you hear from my mouth is from my heart. Whatever I'm going to say here this morning, I mean it from my heart. I've always been a person of justice, ever since I was a little girl. Now I'm a senior, and I believe in justice, and I'm here on behalf of all seniors everywhere. I'm precious, okay?
Yes, you are.
I want you to know, I am, I'm super precious. So if I'm precious, that means all the seniors are precious also.
I know, that's right.
Okay? So, you write these bills, you pass these resolutions and whatever, they're words, okay? And good words, but if they're not being used or in the correct way, they don't mean anything to me, they really don't. And my suggestion to you is, anybody that's a slumlord, you need to make them stay in their property. Let them, let them, let them see what it's like to live with mice and roaches and garbage and unruly people and whatnot. You'll hear from me, maybe, when it's time to vote again. If I don't see, if I don't see any change, hey.
Don't want no smoke, that are, you gotta pass them bills. At this time, as we prepare for the eyes of the world to be focused upon the city of Philadelphia, at this moment, we're going to dispense with the regular order of business to welcome the Chairman of the Philadelphia Soccer 2026 Board of Directors, Mr. Dan Hilfert, and FIFA President Gianni Infantino. Dan Hilfert led Philadelphia's successful bid to be a host city for the FIFA World Cup 2026 and continues to lead the board in preparation for this historical event. President Gianni Infantino has served as FIFA President since February 2016. During his presidency, he has led the organization to a new era of stability, transparency, and prosperity, making FIFA a respected and reliable partner to many. We are also joined by the City Representative, who's the best and most extraordinary event planner in the history of the city of Philadelphia. She's the first lady of the fourth Councilmatic District, City Representative Giselle Jones. And so at this time, I'm going to ask for Mr. Dan Hilfert and the President of FIFA, Gianni Infantino, to please join us at the podium for brief remarks. Could we give the city of Philadelphia a real big round of applause?
Good morning, Council President Johnson, distinguished members of council, and fellow citizens of this region. It's so heartwarming to come and see that City Council, this great body, allows public discourse to happen right in the middle of a session, and I commend you and the entire council for that. It's truly incredible, and thank you for having us, to think about all that's coming to Philadelphia in 2026, next summer. As we prepare for the 2025 FIFA World Cup, we have two of them, we have the World Cup in 2026 and the Club World Cup in 2025. We are so excited for the opportunity to show off our city and the Commonwealth to fans and visitors from around the world. I want to take a moment to thank Mayor Parker, Council President Johnson, and the entire City Council for your ongoing partnership and support. This will be a great event among great events, not only in 2025, but most importantly, in 2026. This is a big moment for our city, our region, and our state. And not to brag, but Philadelphia has a great track record of embracing these moments, especially on the world stage. None of this would be possible without our fantastic partners at FIFA, who have been working with us every step of the way. We have the honor of having FIFA President Gianni Infantino with us today. Gianni has traveled all over the world to promote the game of soccer, or as he calls it, football. He has a busy day today, visiting Lemon Hill, the site of the fan festival this afternoon, and meeting with some of our sponsors later tonight. It is wonderful that Gianni can be here to see for himself what an amazing and passionate group of supporters and fans we have right here in the city of brotherly love and sisterly affection, and to meet with our corporate community. With that, I will turn it back over to Council President Johnson.
At this moment, you know, he's responsible for doing FIFA World Cup all throughout the world, and we'll have an international crowd that will be here in the city of Philadelphia. And for some of you may or may not know, from what I understand, the FIFA World Cup that we will host will be how we hosted the Super Bowl on steroids, right? And so at this time, I'm going to introduce Gianni Infantino. Floor is yours, sir. Let's give him a Philadelphia round of applause, please.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Dear Council President, ladies, gentlemen, what an honor, what a pleasure it is for me to be here in this beautiful city of Philadelphia. Here we are, here we are, to bring actually excellent news, not just good news, because football, as we call it, soccer, as you call it, it's difficult in this city, right, to speak about football or soccer, but go Birds, this I learned it already. Anyway, football or soccer, it doesn't matter, the important is to have fun, to bring happiness, and FIFA is known to be, dear Council President, official happiness provider to humanity since 1904, and we are here in Philadelphia to bring not one, but two FIFA World Cups. One happening this year and one next year. This year, we have a new competition, a new FIFA World Cup, the FIFA Club World Cup, the World Cup of the 32 best club teams in the world, from Manchester City to Real Madrid to Chelsea, many, many more, from South America, Africa, Asia, Europe, North America. They will determine who the best players in the world, for the first time in history, which is the best team in the world. And of course, to be in the city where everything started almost 150 years ago, here in Philadelphia, is a symbol in itself. Here, the American dream started, and here we'll start with a new FIFA World Cup. And then next year, of course, United States, Canada, Mexico, the FIFA World Cup of the countries of the national team. We are here, dear councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, to come and unite the world. Unite the world in Philadelphia, we'll have eight games this year, six games next year. We'll bring teams from the entire world, we'll bring fans from the entire world, and we bring them here because we know that you are such a welcoming city, we know that they feel good, they will mingle with all of you, you will fill the stadium, but they will fill the city with joy and with happiness. And dear friends, at FIFA, we are also aware of our social role and our social responsibility, and as such, we want to donate to the whole city of Philadelphia, here in Philadelphia, $1 million US dollar to be used as a legacy for being a host city of the FIFA Club World Cup. We would like to build together with you, a few small soccer pitches, mini pitches in the areas which have more need, and then some activities with local associations to bring smile and happiness to girls and boys of Philadelphia who can play soccer and enjoy being together. Football or soccer unites the world, we want to unite the world here in Philadelphia. I thank you very, very much for your support, for your help, for your enthusiasm. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council will be at ease for a brief picture. We will now resume our regular order of business.
May Tanya McClary, Jeremy Blattstein, Julia Koprock, George Metasik, and Jasper Liam, please make their way to the podium. Tanya McClary, Jeremy Blattstein, Julia Koprock, George Metasik, and Jasper Liam, please make their way to the podium.
And for all of the individuals who are testifying, I just want to personally say thank you for being patient with us during this council session. Please begin. Please begin.
Good morning to Council President, Council Member Jones, and the other members of council. I'm Tanya McClary, I'm the Executive Director for the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. I'm joined at the podium with the Chair of the Commission, Hassan Bennett. And today, I just wanted to introduce to council, you will be taking a vote on putting five new people on the CPAC Commission, and reappointing one member. So as I call their name, I just want you to see them, so Michelle Enix Kenny, you can stay standing, Malika Rockman, Gilberto Gonzalez, Latanya Whitehead, and Erica Stewart. So these are the five people that you will be hopefully affirming today. And we also have one reappointment, Hakeem PA. Commissioner PA was here, but had a family emergency and had to run out. So I just wanted you all to see them, and I think our Chair just wanted to say something to council as well.
Thank you, council. As we hover over, Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Dilworth Park, right? 1958 was the beginning of oversight in Philadelphia, right? The first city in the United States of America with the government oversight agency, right? So with these appointed or proposed candidates, proposed commissioners, right, I would like to acknowledge the people that have paved the way for us before to make this oversight agency, some of the unsung heroes, right? Honorable Judge Samantha Williams, I'm sorry, I see the red light, is that for me or is that for Tanya? All right, thank you. Honorable Judge Samantha Williams, Keira Bradford Gray, Angelica Hendricks, just to name a few that have been in this fight. Elder Commissioner, Elder Melanie DeBose, who has not been here, but I just want to acknowledge them. A month after Women's History Month, Women's History is still in, Women's History is still the thing, there's been a backbone, oh, you're killing me, that has been the backbone of this fight. So once again, I would like to thank everybody that has participated in oversight in Philadelphia and making it the leader in Philadelphia, as well as our championship Executive Director, Ms. Tanya McClary. But above all, I would like to thank the women, as we have four out of five of our candidates who are women.
Four out of five. Good job, Member Jones.
Good morning, my name is Julia Koprock, I'm here representing the Food Trust. Thank you to Council President Johnson for introducing Resolution 250-318, addressing federal funding, food security, nutrition, and local agriculture. We are so glad to be here to voice support for that resolution. The Food Trust's mission is to ensure delicious, nutritious food for all. We are proud to serve as co-chairs on Council President's Food and Nutrition Security Task Force. We know that canceling these federal funds from the local food purchasing and local food for schools programs will limit healthy food options for Philadelphians, especially our most vulnerable neighbors. It will also cut important revenue for farmers. And we've tested this program here in Philadelphia, so I wanted to offer a local example. At the caring center in West Philadelphia, our local food purchasing pilot program made it possible for the preschool to purchase thousands of dollars of fresh Pennsylvania grown produce to include in over 50,000 meals and snacks for preschoolers. And we're not just talking about a couple of apples and oranges, we're talking about 40 different varieties of fruits and vegetables, that as a result, caregivers were reporting that their kids were eating and trying more fruits and vegetables at home. But now these farmer contracts are paused or getting canceled across the city. We are deeply concerned about this and potentially other federal nutrition and agriculture programs getting reduced, frozen, or canceled at the federal level. This will have devastating effects on the health outcomes of Philadelphia citizens and families, and will be extremely harmful to our businesses. Thank you again to City Council for demanding that this crucial USDA funding be restored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. My name is George Madison, I'm Executive Director of the Share Food Program. We are a food bank, thank you, Curtis, thank you, thank you. We are a food bank in Philadelphia, serving hundreds of thousands of individuals, more than 300,000 kids in our region, who we serve at Share Food Program. I'm here to thank Council President Johnson and members of council for this important resolution demanding the Trump administration restore USDA funding to our communities. In 1965, our country rallied around an idea, an idea of declaring war on poverty. At that time, the Johnson administration, among others, put forward incredibly important programs for our communities, including SNAP benefits, Medicare, Medicaid, and historic funding for public education. Those investments worked. In the late 60s, early 70s, we saw poverty drop nearly in half, and using those vehicles, the Biden administration was able to continue progress, seeing the lowest poverty rate in the history of our country over the course of the last few years. But while we had a war on poverty that started back in the 60s, the Trump administration hasn't declared war on poverty, they've declared war on poor people. In Pennsylvania alone, we have seen $13 million in cuts to food banks, $21 million in cuts just for nutritious food for kids at our schools. Above all, more than anything else today, I just wanted to come here to thank council for saying something, for stepping forward. It is one thing for individuals, it is another thing. We need our institutions to continue to speak up against the Trump administration, whether that is government, whether that is schools, whether that is our universities or our nonprofits, we need to continue to make our voices heard against this administration. Thank you.
Thank you.
We also have Jasper Liam, Lynn Landis, May David Alexander, Wick Savage, and Thomas Kennedy also make their way to the podium.
Ms. Landis, can you give me a second, please? Counsel will be at ease. Just want to ask if you have a cell phone or alarm on your watch, could you, yeah, just put your phone on silence, or your watch or your digital devices on silence? Thank you very much. Ms. Landis, the floor is yours.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lynn Landis of SafeStreetsPhilly.org. I want to speak on the Police Oversight Committee, the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. I want to suggest that we help the public engage in oversight as well, because in our neighborhood, and several neighborhoods across the city, we have repeat offenders, generally speaking, panhandlers, drug addicts, drug dealers, the mentally ill, and the mentally ill homeless that are on our streets, and I only live four blocks away from here, many of them have been here for years, and we don't even know who they are. And what I am suggesting is that the police take pictures of these people when they give them their CVNs, if they even do that, and that these pictures for people who get civil violation notices and arrests are published on the police website, easily available. I've tried, and I called, and I said, why can't I find these photos? Because we had one individual we were tracking, and they said, no, they're not readily available to the public. So that's my first suggestion. My second suggestion is that the police enforce the laws on the books. Why are these people there, day after day, week after week, year after year, and in some cases, decades? We've lived in the city since 2001, and some of these people have been there for that long. So we treat stray dogs better than we treat many of these people. Many of them deserve to be on Social Security disability, and how does that happen when nobody knows their names, we can't follow where they are, their relatives can't find them? So this is the thing, is oversight is all well and good, but it has to be coupled with engagement, transparency, and police enforcement. Thank you.
My name is Mark Clinsey, I'm representing Felix Rive and Renner United. And we're talking, I am talking about the HUD resolution. More than ever, senior citizens like myself and other people that are living in apartments and homes need home repairs, and we can't afford them because of the economy. And we have largely been ignored or marginalized, and we're saying, no more. We're speaking up, we will not be the silent majority anymore. We want, the most importantly, home repairs. We want healthy and safe homes. We want homes we can be proud to live in, free of roaches, mice, rats, or whatever. We need the inspectors to come in and inspect the homes and apartments, and hold the landlords, or as we call them, slum lords, accountable. If they're not going to do it, then they should be arrested. Secondly, well, thirdly, our homes and apartments should also be wheelchair accessible. You have a lot of us that are physically challenged, that are in wheelchairs, walkers, electric carts, electric walkers, they can't, they don't have the mobility they used to have. We call that limited mobility. But we are not weak, by the way, either. We are strong. And that's why we're here speaking to City Council today. You have your job to do, and we have ours. And I say thank you, and I am complete.
Thank you.
We have David Alexander Jenkins, Wick Savage, Thomas Kennedy, May Jacqueline Galindez, and Andre Dawkins also make their way to the podium.
I rise today officially to stand with those in chamber who support Resolutions 250298, 250229, 250317, and 250218. With limited time to address the chamber, the overarching thematic material is the resolutions aforementioned is an emergent demand for the preservation of humanities, be it to preserve impoverished children's access to early childhood education, or to aid those whose lives have been shattered by natural disasters like the floods in East Falls, be it the malfeasance underlined by cruelty so aptly named ill-informed decisions made by the Housing Secretary, Scott Turner, that upended the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, the very program that allows us to preserve and extend affordable housing, or simply the astonishing and most grossly heinous behavior of the Department of Agriculture which stripped funding for food banks, a measure that deepens the crisis of hunger for 210,000 of our neighbors here in the city named for love. It is apparent to me that this federal government is waging a war against us at the very foundation of our core, a war that seeks to strip us of our humanity. Likewise, it is apparent to me that the federal government is deeply misconstrued as to who we are. We are the people entrusted with liberty's flame, handed down through the smoke of revolution and the ink of declaration. We are the product of the forefathers like Thomas Jefferson, who etched in our pores at the core of human life and happiness, and not the destruction of it is the first and only legitimate object of good government. Therefore, let cries of this chamber, of we the people that rise from this chamber, echo across every agency, every district, every hall, every hollow, in different place, in ink, this time through these resolutions. And let us all who dare to extinguish the flame of liberty at any level, as we say in Philadelphia, come round my way, where we, the people, do not yield.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members, community members, and all those gathered here today. My name is Thomas Kenny, and I'm honored to speak in support of Resolution 250252, which was introduced by Council Member Jones on behalf of Michelle Enix Kenny, who I've had the blessing of calling my friend for over three decades, and my wife for the past 25 years. When you spend that much time walking beside someone, you see them for who they truly are, not just in public spaces or professional settings, but in the quiet moments, in the trials, and in the ways that respond to the needs of others. And I can say without hesitation that Michelle is a woman of uncommon integrity.
Go ahead, bruh.
Deep empathy and relentless purpose. She is a natural advocate, not because it's fashionable, but because it's foundational to who she is. I've watched her champion the overlooked and unheard, not just with her voice, but with her time, her energy, and her heart, whether it is in our community, within our family, or in professional circles. Michelle shows up fully, authentically, courageously. She believes in justice, not just as a legal concept, but as a daily practice. She listens closely, she acts deliberately, and she always asks the hard but necessary questions. That's the kind of oversight this city needs, not just accountability, but compassion, not just process, but purpose. Her appointment to the City Police Oversight Commission is not just a next step, it's a natural extension of the values she's upheld her entire life. This is a woman who doesn't just want change, she works for it. She embodies it, and she inspires others, including me. As her husband, I could not be more proud. But as a resident of this great city, I am also deeply encouraged, because I know that Philadelphia is gaining a commissioner who will lead with both strength and sincerity. Michelle's presence on this commission is not just symbolic, it's strategic. Her discernment, her determination, and her deeply held belief in the value of every life will be an asset to this work. So on behalf of myself, our family, and the countless lives Michelle has touched through her unwavering service, I offer my full her unwavering service, I offer my full support
Okay.
...for her confirmation. And I thank you all for seeing in her what so many of us already know to be true.
Bruh. Okay. City council, have black love. I'm talking now, that's what the world need right now, a little bit of love. Yeah. Bruh, you gonna be good for a while. You ain't gonna see the doghouse no time soon. We all gotta step up. That bar said, "Ha." You know what I mean, Isaiah? That's what's up. God is good. Mr. Savage, the floor is yours, sir.
Good afternoon, Council President and Councilmembers. I'm quite sure you was about ready to come down and do your ceremony, because you feel the same way about your wife.
Absolutely.
I'm here to share some insight on Act 135, which Councilman Young brought to this body's attention last session, last Thursday. I would not want to share shade on a certain profession, but you have slick lawyers that are taking advantage of this particular bill. By the time the citizens of Philadelphia catch up with them, that ship have sailed, and that adds to the homeless population. In LA, 70% of the homeless is women, mothers, homeowners. We have got to put the brakes on these bad actors immediately. With the power of this body and your colleagues in Harrisburg, that can be accomplished. And I will say, put it on the record, I have a problem with bullies. They can be dealt with. It's like taking a chimpanzee and putting a gorilla in a boxing ring. Your citizens don't have a chance with these slick lawyers. Thank you.
We have Jaclyn Galindez, Andre Dawkins, Mayo Bona Hagens, and Tyrese Rogers also make their way to the podium.
My name is Andre Dawkins. Good morning.
Roger, can you come closer to the microphone? Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Andre Dawkins. Good morning, everyone. I'm here speaking for One Pennsylvania about the homeless situation and the fair housing situation. I've lived in Philadelphia for 63 years now. I done seen a lot, and I noticed that a lot of abandoned, like, I live in Broadway on me, there was a fire because the landlord was written to people that was actually homeless getting high, in a abandoned building that had no heat, no running water. It caught on fire, almost set the other two on fire, that's between 11th and 12th of Wyoming. And it was so bad that it had rubber tires in it, that you could smell the fire from Broad Street to Hunter Park. And it was a bad fire, and it lasted most of the night. But it's, we have to do something. I have, I have 35 years clean during the 19th, thank God. So I've been there. I lived on the street for five years. But the only thing I do know, and I say this clearly to everyone, it's a part of the spirit here that we need to really understand. Yes, a part to say, we gotta accept the things we cannot change, but we do have the courage to change the things we can, if we really want to. And we need to do this, because there's too many young folks. I done seen young folks, when I say young, 20, 30, on the streets, and you got buildings that's, that's sitting there, that's owned by a city and other people that will not do nothing with them, and it don't make sense. But we will send millions to another country to get them off and get them fed, but we can't feed the ones that we walk over every day. Look at it. How, how, how do that really look to us? Now, that don't make sense. We can't even feed our own, but we feed someone else. So I, all I'm asking, that y'all really pass this bill so that people in Philly and not just, I might not see it, I'm 63, I'm worried about my grandkids, their kids, so it'd be a change that they don't have to struggle like I am. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. How you doing? My name is Ms. Porter, I'm here to advocate for black women. I'mma just tell a short, sweet story on why it's important to support what the solutions we have to offer, and please support us. My daughter would have been 15 this year, and the system failed me. I was 19, I had nowhere to turn to, I kept telling them I couldn't feel my baby move. They did not listen to me. They would only give me two ultrasounds, one around 16, 20 weeks to see what I'm having, and then around 36 weeks to make sure the baby head was down. I told them I couldn't move. They did not listen to mom. I cried, I called, I asked for help. My daughter passed away. With that being said, I could go on with plenty of stories, I know everybody want to get out there. All I want to do is bring awareness that this is real. Don't wait till it happen to you, don't wait till it happen to a loved one, don't wait till it happen to a family member. Every time I see something on Instagram, social media, every time a mother pass away, every time a baby injured, every time the mom injure, I drop another tear. I do a lot of other things, but this is what I'm passionate about. And just support us, because we need to support, dads do too.
Good afternoon. My name is Tyrese Rogers, and I am a member of One PA, Renters United, and then I have other people I consider my family, that would be Philly Thrive and West by Southwest. I am here for all people, for all council members, rather, to support the Safe and Healthy Homes Act. When I started renting, I live in, in Councilman Thomas's district, my place was inspected. My place was, was that my landlord, he called out the people to conduct a lead, no tests. Everything passed. I live in a decent enough place, but as long as my people don't have what they need, I'm gonna be here, okay? I thank you all, and please, support our bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Obona Hagens, fourth-generation chattel slavery survivor. I stand before you today to honor the Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Service Center School and their incredible Cart DM event, which celebrates the dedication of both students and judges. This initiative is truly remarkable, offering our young people an opportunity to engage, learn, grow in a meaningful way. However, as we celebrate the achievements of these students, I'm reminded of the conversation I had earlier today with a student from the School of the Future. This student expressed a lack of awareness regarding their student council, a vital component of student governance. It's concerning that even our youth in schools that offer such councils don't fully understand the structures available to them. I also spoke with my son, a ninth grader at FLC, who shared with me that the school does not have a student council at all. This, to me, speaks volumes about the disconnection many of our youth, especially freedmen youth, feel towards their heritage and the institutions that could empower them. We must recognize that our youth descendants of the emancipated, they must know their rights, they must know the Constitution, they must be taught it. It is essential that our young people understand the Reconstruction Amendments, the Civil Rights Act of 1866, and the protections that were fought for them and codified specifically for them. I urge this body to ensure that every freedman, the descendants of the emancipated, whether in student council or in the classroom, knows their history and understands the legal rights that protect them as the progeny of the emancipated. We must do better in connecting them with their past so they can confidently navigate their future. Obona Hagens, over and out.
Council President, there are no further names for public comment.
That concludes today's public comment, period. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passage calendars. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250250?
A resolution appointing Malika Rahm into the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion on Resolution Number 250250.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that Resolution Number 250250 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please, would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250251?
A resolution appointing Gilberto Gonzalez to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250251.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the resolution be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. For the record, that's 250251. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250252?
A resolution appointing Michelle Enix Kenny to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Jones and her loving husband, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been enthusiastically seconded. That Resolution Number 250252 be adopted, all those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250253?
A resolution appointing Latonya Whitehead to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250253.
Now, on behalf of Councilmember Jones, I move the adoption of the resolution. I know.
It has been moved and property seconded, that Resolution Number 250253 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250254? A resolution reappointing Hakeem P. A. to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250254.
In conjunction with my Majority Leader, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and property seconded, that Resolution Number 250254 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Want to take a moment to acknowledge all the appointees, especially Ms. Rockman. We know the work you have been doing on behalf of the City of Philadelphia. And take a moment, a special privilege, and just acknowledge our colleague, Councilmember Jones, for his hard work and dedication for the appointees. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250297?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 1911 Mountain Street, located in the Second Councilmatic District in accordance with the terms of Chapter 16-700 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250297.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that Resolution Number 250297 be adopted. All those in favor of the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250298?
A resolution calling on the Trump administration and the Department of Health and Human Services to preserve funding and administrative support for Head Start, prevent program disruptions, and protect access to early childhood education for low-income families.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250298.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that Resolution Number 250298 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250299?
A resolution calling on the Trump administration to reverse the termination of an environmental protection agency grant awarded to the City of Philadelphia to support efforts to address flooding in Eastwick, a community that has been disproportionately impacted by environmental injustice and hardships.
The chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250299.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that Resolution Number 250299 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250300?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 813 Union Street, 6130 Ellsworth Street, 4910 King Sessing Avenue, 5417 Florence Avenue, 5425 Florence Avenue in the Third Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jamie Gortier for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250300.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that Resolution Number 250300 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250304?
A resolution renaming the 5700 block of West Oxford Street Fred Rosenfeld Way to honor and celebrate the life and legacy of Frederick C. Rosenfeld for his outstanding contributions to youth sports in Philadelphia.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones Jr. for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250304.
On behalf of those who overbroke Panthers, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and property seconded, that Resolution Number 250304 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250305?
A resolution appointing Erica Stewart to the Citizens Police Oversight Commission.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250305.
On behalf of the Beatles that we are installing, I move for the adoption. I'm very proud of each and every one of them.
It has been moved and property seconded, that Resolution Number 250305 be adopted. All those in favor, the motion was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250310?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fee simple title to 2323 through 31 North Fifth Street, 2322, 2324, 2326, 2328, and 2330 North Orkney Street in the Seventh Councilmatic District of the City of Philadelphia, and further authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to transfer to the Philadelphia Land Bank fee simple title to such properties pursuant to Section 16-405 of the Philadelphia Code.
The chair recognizes the gentlelady from the Seventh Councilmatic District, Councilmember Keti Lizada, for a motion regarding Resolution Number 250310.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded, that the Resolution Number 250310 be adopted. All those in favor, was signified by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of Resolution Number 250314?
A resolution recognizing the central role of labor organizing and labor unions in the history of Philadelphia, their ongoing importance to the well-being of working-class families, and condemning the Trump administration's continued pursuit of anti-labor and anti-worker policies.
The chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke for a
in the history of Philadelphia, their ongoing importance to the well-being of working-class families, and condemning the Trump Administration's continued pursuit of anti-labor and anti-worker policies.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Nicholas O'Rourke for a motion regarding resolution number two-five-zero-three-one-four.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that resolution number two-five-zero-three-one-four be adopted, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of resolution number two-five-zero-three-one-seven?
A resolution responding to the U.S. Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Scott Turner's ill-informed understanding of public housing development, and call for deregulation by reinforcing the importance of continued preservation of local control over housing development decisions to ensure development aligns with the needs and desires of our communities, and calling on Turner to preserve the Choice Neighborhood Initiative Program, which enables PHA to preserve and expand its affordable housing stock.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember and Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion regarding resolution number two-five-zero-three-one-seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Bass, on your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution number two-five-zero-three-one-seven be adopted, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of resolution number two-five-zero-three-one-eight?
A resolution demanding the Trump Administration and the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the USDA, to restore the funding that was cut for programs supporting Pennsylvania food banks and schools accessing local produce, which will endanger food security for vulnerable children and families in Philadelphia, and further deepening the crisis of hunger in the city.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma for a motion regarding resolution number two-five-zero-three-one-eight.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution on your behalf.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted. And for the record, that's two-five-zero-three-one-eight. Would a clerk please read the title of the bill number two-four-zero-three-three-three? This bill hasn't been read on two different days. As the clerk shall read the bill.
Oh, sorry. An ordinance amending section fourteen dash five-three-three of the Philadelphia Code entitled Mixed Income Neighborhoods Overlay District to update the illustrative maps to reflect recent redistricting changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
This bill hasn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Would the Chief Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Phillips was aye. Councilmember Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaultier?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye, and I'd like to be recorded, aye on all resolutions I may have missed, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Shall it be recorded?
Councilmember Landau?
Aye.
Councilmember Lizada?
Aye.
Councilmember Young?
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks?
Aye.
Councilmember Harity?
Council President, I vote aye, and I'd like to be marked aye on any resolutions I may have missed.
Shall be recorded, sir.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Aye.
Councilmember Swilla?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass was aye. Councilmember Ahmad?
Aye.
And Council President Johnson?
Aye. The ayes are seventeen, and ayes are zero. Majority of all members having voted in the affirmative, the bill passes. Would a clerk please read the title of bill number two-four-zero-four-two-seven-dash-a-a.
An ordinance amending section fourteen dash three-oh-five of the Philadelphia Code entitled Nonconformities by Providing Further Provisions on Changes from Nonconforming Uses, all under Certain Terms and Conditions.
The Chair recognizes the Gentleman from the Fifth Councilmatic District, Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young, for a motion on this bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that bill number two-four-oh-four-two-seven-a-a be placed on the suspension calendar.
It has been moved and property seconded that bill number two-four-zero-four-two-seven-dash-a-a be placed on the suspension calendar. All those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. The next order of business is the consideration of privileged resolutions. Would a clerk please read any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A privileged resolution recognizing the week of April fifth through eleventh, twenty-twenty-five, as Week of the Young Child in Philadelphia in support of the National Association for the Education of Young Children and commending the work of N-E-N-A-E-Y-C for promoting high-quality education and developmental services for children under eight years of age. Introduced by Councilmember Phillips on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Richardson for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of Councilmember Dr. Anthony Phillips, and on your behalf, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing April eleventh through the seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, as Black Maternal Health Week in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Gilmore Richardson.
The Chair recognizes Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the Pennsylvania Black Maternal Health Caucus, led by Representatives Cephas, Curry, and Mays, and on behalf of all of the stakeholders that joined us here today in Philadelphia City Council, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing Eric Reynolds for his historic contributions to the St. Joseph University's men's basketball program, his record-breaking journey to becoming the university's all-time leading scorer, and his lasting impact on the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Thomas.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the Elevation Project, a nonprofit organization for its outstanding contributions to reducing recidivism, supporting formerly incarcerated individuals, and helping create pathways to a brighter future, introduced by Councilmember Jones.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on a resolution.
On behalf of all of the citizens, getting a second chance, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring Inspector Verdel Johnson for his retirement and years of service from the Philadelphia Police Department, introduced by Councilmember Jones on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jones for a motion on a resolution.
On your behalf, I move for the adoption.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing April tenth, twenty-twenty-five, as National Youth HIV and AIDS Awareness Day in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Landau for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the Philadelphia chefs and restaurants named as the finalists for the twenty-twenty-five James Beard Awards, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Landau for a motion regarding resolution number for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as World Art Day in the City of Philadelphia, and celebrating the creativity, innovation, and cultural diversity of the city's fine arts, introduced by Councilmember Landau.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Landau for a motion on a resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing April sixth through the twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, as National Crime Victims Rights Week in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Young on behalf of Council President Johnson.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion on a resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the month of April as National Woodworking Month in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Young.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution recognizing the week of April thirteenth through the nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as a National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilmember Young.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Young for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Special Committee on Kensington to hold hearings on the intersection of homelessness and substance abuse disorder in communities with both unstable housing and addiction, introduced by Councilmember Harity.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Harity for a motion on a resolution.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the Newman-Goreti Girls Basketball Team on winning the PIAA State Championship, introduced by Councilmember Swilla.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Swilla for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution honoring and congratulating the Newman-Goreti Boys Basketball Team on winning the PIAA State Championship, introduced by Councilmember Swilla.
The Chair recognizes Councilmember Swilla for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold a hearing on the policies of the Department of Health and Human Services regarding child welfare protections, introduced by Councilmember Ahmad.
The Chair of the Health Committee calls on Councilmember Dr. Nina Ma for a motion on a resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of this resolution.
It has been moved and property seconded that the resolution be adopted, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Would a clerk please read the title of the next resolution?
Council President, there are no further resolutions in my possession.
Thank you. That completes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? The Chair recognizes Minority Leader Kendra Brooks.
New Council President, I want to thank my colleague, Majority Leader Gilmore Richardson, for her leadership on addressing the black maternal mortality crisis and elevating black maternal health week here in Philadelphia. With her support, my office is partnering with Ocean Family Center and the Maternity Care Coalition and the Coalition for Equitable Health to host an advocacy day here in City Hall on Tuesday of next week. Advocates and healthcare professionals will be visiting city council offices to raise awareness about the crisis in black maternal health and highlight the importance of community-based care. I ask that you please welcome them on Tuesday when they come to your offices to share their stories, data, and solutions for safer births and brighter futures for black mamas and birthing people. And I want to thank everyone for participating today. Thank you, Council President. That's it.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember O'Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. President. There is another word from the minority today. Today, that word is dignity, because every person deserves to live in a safe home, and every person deserves to move to the city without fear or without hardship. Roughly fifty percent of the city rents, as every other person that you see that's a resident of the City of Philadelphia is renting. I, as well as a few other members, happen to be among them. Of those fifty percent nearly of the residents of the City of Philadelphia that rent, an estimated forty percent of rental properties in the city require repairs. Almost half of the properties require repairs. Today, I introduced what is known as the Safe Healthy Homes Act, which is comprised of three parts: a right to safety, a right to repairs, a right to relocation, recognizing that so much of the housing that is provided is in need of repair, and that if you open your mouth to say something about the condition, sometimes you can be retaliated against. We need a right to safety. Not only that, when, as they say, slum lords do not take care of the properties where in which the human beings are called to live, if they have to be displaced in order to make sure that those conditions are improved, they ought to have a right to relocation and not have to bear the burden of expense to find some other place to live in the poorest big city in the USA. Today, I'm joined by Renters United, by Philly Thrive, other tenant unions and groups who advocate for safe, healthy homes. So I'm not the only one who cares deeply about not only providing housing, but providing humane housing as well. I would solicit the support of my colleagues as we look through this bill, and we introduce this over the next couple of weeks or what have you, to support what we are doing here, to make sure that we recognize the gaping holes in the code as it stands, and fill those holes with actual muscle and teeth that can ensure healthy, safe homes. We don't want elders that we heard today having to live amongst squalor. I went last summer, brought some box fans to Burt's Shalom with Councilmember Jones, because tenants, their elders, raised concerns about the conditions, and they told them they couldn't no longer stay in the commonplaces. We went down to the Hardy Williams Homes, I guess a couple months ago, and even as those tenants spoke out about those conditions, they had sharpen carts that they all used remove from them, retaliated against, simply because they opened their mouth to speak up about the conditions. This should not be so in the City of Philadelphia. So I thank those who did co-sign today on that matter, and I do hope that we can win your support in the long haul. I've, like I said, I've heard from far too many tenants across the city who are living in unsafe, unhealthy homes while rents keep rising also, and I've seen how landlords ignore critical repairs and how our system fails to protect the people who are most at risk, especially low-income families, seniors, and people with disabilities. Poor housing conditions like mold, pests, and lead are driving serious health issues for children and families, and I believe everyone deserves a healthy, safe place to live. Just as housing is a human right, so is the ability to move safely and affordably through our city. Philadelphians rely on public transit every day to live their lives. Yesterday, we heard the good news that funding for zero fares secured through FY twenty-twenty-six. But while that's a step forward, we need a permanent solution to ensure reliable, accessible transit for the long haul, particularly as we consider, as we did today, the excitement building around the FIFA World Cup here in twenty-twenty-six. It was brought to my attention that due to the, I guess recently announced this morning, service cuts and fare increases, SEPTA would not be able to support the World Cup. They would not be able to support other celebrations to mark the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary next year. So tomorrow, there will be a rally outside of City Hall at eleven a.m. demanding the state to permanently fund SEPTA and the protection of public transit in a city that needs it the most. Thank you, Mr. President. I hope that we can win over much support for both of these major, major issues: public transit as well as affordable, safe, healthy housing in the City of Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Speech on behalf of the majority, the Chair recognizes the Chair of the Health Committee, Dr. Nina Ma.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I introduced a resolution on to hold hearings on the Department of Human Services because we are facing a crisis, one that spans institutions, undermines public trust, and puts black and brown lives, especially children's lives, at risk. The Department of Human Services is meant to protect our most vulnerable, but it has become increasingly clear that the system is failing structurally, chronically, and with devastating consequences. Since DHS shifted child welfare responsibilities to private nonprofits known as community umbrella known as community umbrella agencies, or COAs, we have seen a disturbing pattern of neglect and mismanagement. Investigations by the Philadelphia Inquirer revealed at least seventy lawsuits involving COAs, including fourteen that detail the deaths of children under their care. Case workers are severely overburdened, oversight is inconsistent, and the system has allowed dangerous conditions to persist for far too long. And just today, the Inquirer exposed another harmful practice, the routine use of coercive voluntary placements. DHS has pressured many parents, primarily black and brown, into signing over custody of their children without legal representation, often under the threat of formal foster care. These deeply vulnerable families are being funneled into a hidden foster care system that operates without transparency or safeguards. And in at least one case, this has led to tragedy, the death of Selaya Williams, a toddler placed through one of these informal arrangements. Let's be clear, children deserve to be safe in the care of the adults entrusted with their well-being. And when they age out of the system, they deserve more than just paperwork. They deserve a supported, structured path to success, including access to stable housing, mental health care, education, and job training. So I introduced this resolution to address many of these issues. These hearings, however, are not about finger-pointing. They are about accountability, transparency, and real transformative change. We will examine DHS's leadership policies, funding decisions, and outcomes. We will hear from families, youth advocates, and frontline workers and youth themselves. And we will do the hard work of rebuilding a system that doesn't just protect children, it empowers families and communities. Because we cannot build a one Philly, a united city with equal opportunity for all if our children and our most vulnerable neighbors continue to be failed by the very systems designed to protect them, and we cannot claim equity when turning a blind eye to harm. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Rulandau.
Thank you, Council President. Today, I introduced a resolution calling upon the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to pass the Ready to Rent Act, a crucial piece of legislation that would increase housing opportunities and potentially change lives. The Ready to Rent Act would automatically seal eviction records seven years or older, allowing those who have struggled to access or retain housing in the past, a fresh start. Access to stable housing is a human right and fundamental to creating a new chapter. I urge the Commonwealth to pass this legislation and give these renters a new opportunity. Today, I also like to congratulate the Philadelphia chefs and restaurants named as finalists in the twenty twenty-five James Beard Awards, namely Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Maun, Royal Izakaya, and Her Place Supper Club. Philadelphia's thriving food scene continues to set new standards. And these finalists are a testament to innovation and passion of our city's culinary landscapes. Congrats to these incredible chefs. We are incredibly proud of all of you and look forward to getting a reservation with each of you soon. It's a joke. I also want to acknowledge and celebrate that April fifteenth is World Art Day here in Philadelphia. We all recognize the power of the arts to unite and inspire us, especially in times of turmoil. Around the globe, we are seeing fear and uncertainty. It's in times like these that we turn to art for inspiration, unification, and community. Whether you're an artist yourself or just an enjoyer like me, I encourage you to celebrate World Arts Day on Tuesday. And finally, today, we recognize National Youth HIV and AIDS Awareness Day here in Philadelphia. I got my start in activism by organizing with groups like ACT UP during the early years of the HIV and AIDS epidemic. Today, thanks to prevention medication and life-saving treatment, those living with HIV have a diagnosis, not a death sentence. This message couldn't be more important now as the Trump administration threatens to roll back funding for preventive measures like PrEP and research. These acts, these rollbacks, also fuel the myths and misinformation about HIV and AIDS and roll back decades of the progress we've made to educate and protect our young people. LGBTQ plus rights are human rights, and we must uplift the vital organizations and nonprofits who are doing this work despite these barriers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to remind constituents of the Fifth Council District that on April nineteenth, we will be having our shredding and e-waste event at our district office located at twenty-eight fifteen Ridge Avenue that is in Sedgley Plaza, near the intersection of Ridge and Sedgley. So please bring all your paper, bring all your old electronic waste that you want to dispose of to this event. We'll be out there from nine AM to about one PM. That is April nineteenth on Ridge and Sedgley next Saturday. And I also want to thank my colleagues today for bringing the attention to black maternal health care. Even in my own life, with my wife, had complications during our pregnancy where she basically just was not listened to by the doctors. They gave her the epidural way too soon, which in turn, she had to have a C-section, so denied her the right to have a natural birth. So that's an issue that we must keep bringing to the forefront and advocating for because if you don't know that terminology or how to speak to those doctors, you know, your health, your life will be at risk. So I just want to commend my colleagues for continuing to bring that to the forefront. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Curtis Jones.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Sometimes I wonder if my colleagues who sit here realize how special and important you are to the continuation of public policy in the City of Philadelphia. Do you recognize the people who sat in these seats before you? Today, I rise to thank you for your support for the Citizens Police Oversight Committee. As was brought up by its chair, it started as an advisory committee sponsored by a councilperson who sat in these chambers by the name of Cecil B. Moore, who collaborated with a young fiery pre-pastor by the name of Leon Sullivan. And they had the foresight to see that, you know, police and the citizens may have a problem from time to time. And that maybe the advice from the then Negro to the color, to the black African-American might be of some assistance to the Dilworth administration. And in that regard, they decided to do it. In so doing, I go back to the Fifth Councilmatic District, that in nineteen sixty-four, there was a riot. It was a race riot. And it started on misinformation. The belief was that a pregnant woman was assaulted by police on the avenue, and it spread like wildfire. And what was missing at the time was the belief that a true complaint by a citizen would be taken seriously. And it resulted in the devastation of parts of North Philadelphia that it took twenty, thirty years to restore. What this continuation of appointments does is offers a legitimate recourse to say, if you have a real complaint, or that there is a problem with how the City of Philadelphia does business, you have recourse that you can believe in, that will do their very best to bring justice to the people that pay our bills. And so I am very proud today and thankful to you for voting them in. I do believe that we have found, you know, in fights, Mr. President, styles make fights. And these folk are diverse geographically. They come from different parts of the city. Thank you, Ketsy Lozada, for your good referral. It was a surprise and welcome addition. But we have them from all over the city. And so we get a diversity that comes not just from race, but geography. But, you know, justice in Chestnut Hill is different than justice in South Philly. It shouldn't be justice by zip code, but sometimes there is. So I am more confident today than I've ever been that we have a fighting chance to address whatever comes our way as a city by way of police-community relations. And it's thanks to the members in this room and a staffer by the name of Caroline Stack that we give her a round of applause. So with that, thank you. The work is in front of them, but they are up for the task. They're going to be trained. They're going to have those community meetings that my members should come out and poke their head in every now just to see what the people are saying about the work of our fine Philadelphia Police Department and how they interact with their bosses, the citizens of the City of Philadelphia. Thank you, Mr. President.
Member Jones, could you make an announcement about your event on Monday, April fourteenth?
Oh, yes. And by the way, we are, which is at the president's urging, taking the budget to the streets. We will be at the Crock Center from six to eight PM with my members talking about your budget, your money, your vote matters. And I really appreciate you emphasizing getting out into the neighborhoods so we can hear from the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Jones. The Chair recognizes Councilmember Thomas for a motion to adjourn.
Council President, before we adjourn, I was given a directive to announce on your behalf that the Black Maternal Roundtable, the Black Maternal Roundtable Centering the Roles of Men Conversation with Fathers Surrounding Pregnancy, Childbirth, and More will take place tomorrow at eleven-thirty in Room five-seventy-six. The organization, A Home From Shayna Foundation, will be the host along with you, Council President. And I found out today that I will be there as well, too. So I'm looking forward to the conversation.
Looking forward to seeing you, sir.
With that being said, Council President, I move that council stands adjourned until Thursday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, at ten AM.
It has been moved in property second that council stands adjourned until Thursday, April the twenty-fourth, at ten AM. And for those who celebrate, have a happy Easter because we will not see you on the week of the twenty-fourth. All those in favor were signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you very much for your hard work.